Sit down, John.
I saw all the other things.
Okay. It is Tuesday, April 12th, 2022. We'll call a meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes and reports received and filed.
Yes, we have the Sheriff's March 2022 fees and we have the Treasurer's March 2022 reconciliation report.
Okay. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Yeah, we have a Mac Board meeting in about an hour. Probably missed that one, but they were doing it on a Tuesday this time for going over and doing some legislative meetings. We've got another meeting, 3:00 this afternoon for the ARPA money. Home Builders Board meeting this afternoon, Planning Commission meeting this evening, Sol Waste Management District Board meeting tomorrow afternoon, HBA General Membership meeting Wednesday, Communities meeting Thursday morning. At the Chiefs, is that this week?
Yep.
Okay. Good Friday, Easter, and quarterly reports are due. Don't forget those. I think that's it.
Let's see. In addition to what Jeff mentioned, salute to America tomorrow and a safety meeting on Thursday.
Okay. And I've got down what Jeff had, too. Wednesday at 1:30, the Sons of the American Revolution. We are honoring Thomas Jefferson. He's 279 years old tomorrow. So we're gonna do that out on the Capitol steps and get rained on. And then the Red Slipper has their launch Wednesday night, too, out at CCP. But that's all I've got. Commission comments. Before we do our bids and contracts, I'm gonna move the proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators forward and have you come forward and then I'll have... I've got our both of you. Do it all. Come on up. Come on up.
Please do me all a favor. You don't have to stick around for all of this, don't there? The sauce isn't gonna get made.
They say the same thing, so you can pick whichever one you want. Whereas the week of April 11th through the 16th, 2022, is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and whereas Jefferson City and Cole County Public Safety Telecommunicators answer over 17,000 calls for service every year, serving as a trusted lifeline between our citizens and emergency responders. And we got some other wheresses. Now, therefore, we, the Cole County Commission, by virtue of the authority vested in us by the laws of Missouri, do hereby proclaim the week of April 11th through the 16th, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week and call upon the people of Cole County to serve this week by appreciating our telecommunications and recognizing the critical role they play in protecting the citizens of Jefferson City and Cole County. So you get one, you get one.
Just scratch together.
Guys, you showered this morning. I'm pretty good. Thank you very much. Then I've got... You guys now, you know, we do the Toys for Tots every year, and so this year, our EMS department really stepped forward, and I forget how many hundred toys you've collected. But I'm kind of an ex officio, Marie Corr, or Toys for Tots person. So anyway, the President, you are receiving the President's Award for your collection of all of the toys, and next year, this year, we'll do...
It was two amulets last year. We gotta do three this year.
Yeah. And we're getting bigger handles, too.
Yes, we're getting bigger handles, too. So hopefully we'll have those big ones.
Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, it's good talk, guys.
Too late.
Oh, that got away.
All right. One of those should jump.
Thank you.
All righty. Good enough, huh? Probably shop them in there.
Okay. We will go back to our agenda. Bids and contracts. Bid award for 2022-16 Interior Painting at EMS.
All right. For 2022-16 Interior Painting at EMS, we had three vendors respond to the RFP. Eric did call on some references, and our recommendation is to go with Imhoff Construction with $15,835. Do you guys have a bid tab?
No, it's not attached to it. I think you've emailed it. I don't remember.
That's all I think. I'm good with that.
I got my three final.
I'm good with it.
And they're a lot quicker, too.
Make a motion to award the interior painting contract to Imhoff Construction at a cost of $15,835.
Just a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we have any unfinished business? Okay. New business. Accounts payable review.
I'd ask for a count payable pending review.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second and final reading of budget adjustment number one.
Okay, this is for $11,998. This is a grant that the EMA Department got from Homeland Security. So I do need motion on this today.
Good. Trying to figure out where it's...
The grant's... I'll tell you more about the grant.
So who's it with? Homeland Security?
Yep.
Okay. Make a motion to sign the budget amendment with Homeland Security for the budget adjustment number...
One.
One?
One.
That's number one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signing of non-company agreement, and I think this is something we do every year or so.
It's Chris Estes. He's not here.
Yeah.
Do we have the agreement? Did he send it to you to review?
Well, I seen it, but he was supposed to bring it here and finalize it.
Did he send it to us? Let's go to the next one.
Yeah, we're gonna move that. I forget. I think he's got a doctor's appointment, so we'll take that back later. Discussion of salary issues in the Cole County Sheriff's Department. Here you get to sign it.
Oh, forgot. We get to sign these, too.
We can save time if you just wanna breathe a little.
Which button was yours here?
So, the bad news is that currently, the Cole County Sheriff's Department's in a staffing crisis. We're 22 down, or more importantly, 13 full-time positions and nine part-time positions down right now. We did hire two. They started yesterday, two jailers. But we're in a staffing crisis. I'm not gonna waste your time and look at... There's several articles here I have that I've looked up about law enforcement staffing, not only across Missouri, but the nation. Across the whole nation, we are short law enforcement officers. The problem we have here is we're competing with the same people because there's so many law enforcement agents in this area. We've lost people to Boone County Courts, Cole County Courts, because they poached one from me, JCPD took two from me, Columbia PD took two, Missouri State Edward Crow took one, Callaway took two, Hol Sommet took one, State Investigations took two, Treasurer poached another one from mine. So I'm losing people left and right. So I gotta address it. I gotta stop the bleed. And the first thing that I have to do that with is the salaries. Currently, our starting salary is 38.8, and if you look at around this area, that's pretty low when it comes to what we're dealing with around this area. To get... To really get into it more, if you look at the very first page, you'll see that the International Association of Chiefs of Police typically, they said that your budget typical comprises of 80% to 95% of the department's total budget should go towards personnel. It's easy to budget if you know that and you move on. Right now, EMS is at 75%, Bay List is at 76, Health Department's at 69, Juvenile's at 85, Prosecutor's 94, Assessor 74, Commission's at 98, Cole County Sheriff's Department's at 54.62. So we're way unfunded as far as our personnel goes. So we wanna do better for our staff. So if you look at the second page, you'll see that my proposal is gonna cost a little bit of money, but before we can talk how much money it's gonna cost, we have to know how much money I'm gonna have in my budget. With the... If you look at the budget on R16, the total revenue decrease from the prior year is gonna be 1.8. So I'm losing 1.8 billion revenue because the sales tax is going down. The good news is the debt service reduces $2.9 million. So while my revenue is gonna go down, my debt services goes down further. So the total revenue after debt services is gonna be about $1.1 million. So in 2023, I would have $1.1 million additional to my current budget. So this year's budget, I was... It was a good budget, right? I didn't have any negative. It was a good budget. So next year, when I go into next year, I'm gonna have the same budget plus another $1.1 million. So I have more than enough money to be able to pay for this, for these increases. Page three, you'll see that what the current base pay is and what the proposed base pay is. Now, when you first look at those, you think that's a really big jump, and it is. But you gotta remember that most of the individuals aren't at that base pay because they got the 5.5% y'all thankfully gave them last year and so forth. The jailer, we'll start out with jailer. You guys gave me the idea whenever you were talking about the EMS. You went for the EMTs. You were sending them. They were actually sending EMTs to get certified as a paramedic, and the comment was made, and I don't remember. Actually, I think it was either Jeff or Sam, was talking about how the EMTs then become feeders for paramedics because they were so short on paramedics. So last year, I don't know if you remember, but last year, we started sending people to LETI, and now we're sending them to Lincoln. And because of that, the last two people that we brought on the road has been from the jail. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to make the jailers as our feeders. So we need to bring them up, and of course, that's where we're missing most of our people is working in the jails. So they go from 35 to 42. And the deputy, we went to 48. I actually had it at 50,000. And when I first did this budget, I included everybody, including civilians, because I have issues with my civilians, too, as far as pay. I can't afford to leave... If you think about our organization, it's like an assembly line, and there's things that has to happen in the front before we can do them in the end for us to accomplish the mission. And most of the stuff that happens in the front end is all civilians. And if I lose civilians, then I have to pull commission people in to do those jobs because I have to do that job. So my first intent was to do all of them, but after speaking with you guys, because this has been a six-month... This has been a six-month process. I didn't come up with this in a week. But after speaking with you, after speaking with Kristen, I took the civilians out of it, and I actually lowered it. I started the starting salaries for the deputies at 50 because that's what the Highway Patrol's at 53, Boone County's at 51, 51. So, I mean, Miller County's going up, so everyone's going up around us. So I lowered it to 48. And then as far as the Corporal Sergeant, Lieutenant Captain, I have to have some separation in there so we don't have to come back here again in three years because of compression. So I went with a $7,000 difference. So if you look, you'll see there's $7,000 difference in every one of those levels. Now, the base pay is a good thing, and we'd be able to implement that, but we still have to take care of our people. It's been there for a while. Unfortunately, I don't have enough money to make it right. So what I came up with, what our staff came up with, zero to two years, if they've been here for zero to two years, they would not get anything. Two to four years, they'd get a $1,200 bump on top of the proposed base pay. And then the four-plus years, they'd get a $2,400 bump on top of the base pay. So if I do it that way, then some of my people who have been with me for a while will have more money than those that just started with me. And I mean, I think that's fair. And then below that, you can see the step raise. Actually, again, this was a... The step raise was something I stole from EMS and from Jeff and you guys with this. Instead of... But I can't do every year, but I can do a two-year, a four-year, and a six-year, $1,200 bump on their anniversary on the two, four, and six years. But that's next year, so... And that's gonna be part of my budget negotiations for next year. We're at a crisis because of the shortage I have in personnel. I have one person this past pay period that turned in 57 hours of overtime. Now, that's a lot of money we're pushing. And by the way, our current jail overtime is at 65%. So we're in the end of the third month. That's what the budget is right now, and I'm at 65% of my overtime. So I gotta do something because I'm burning my people out. I'm killing them. So on page four, you can see the total cost for the salary adjustment for the year, for a whole year, would be 661,000, well below the 1.1 million that I currently have. The total cost starting May 1, because that's when I want to implement this, is May 1, would be 406,000. My current salary surplus is 240,000. And then if you annualize that to May 1, I would actually have $328.29. So there is... Due to vacancies, I'll have more than enough funds to implement the salary adjustment this year without any additional cost to the Sheriff's Department. Additionally, since as far as budget year 2023, the yearly cost of the proposed salary increase is 661,000, my total revenue after debt services will increase by $1.1 million. So due to the emergent nature of my current staffing, I'm requesting to implement these proposed salary adjustments as of 1 May 22. That's all I have. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Did you say what JC's paying theirs right now?
We don't know. They're in negotiations. I have no idea.
What are they paying right now, do you know?
I don't know that yet.
They just got the new tax that passed.
Yeah, but they're going through negotiations right now with them. They're supposed to announce that either tomorrow or... Or not tomorrow. I don't know when they're gonna announce it.
Okay. So we got to talk about it last week, and I briefly told you this morning, too. We had some questions and stuff. So I was curious what some of these other places do pay so we can do some comparing. And then I'd also like to see what it does to the budget from '23, '24, out to five years, 10 years, 20 years, because right now, it looks good because you got 1.1 million after the tax rollback. So I just...
If I have it, if I have the 1.1 million in 2023, I'm gonna have it for the next... For however long. It's gonna keep coming in. Sales tax is up right now, 7%. So in actuality, I think that the sales tax number that's in that deal is probably wrong. I think it's higher than that.
Yeah, you can plug different numbers in there, too, and make it do funny things.
That's true.
We did that back when your predecessor was here, too. He goes from red to black pretty easy.
Yes, sir.
So I agree with you. I think we need to make some changes. We need to be able to compete, and we need to pay our officers. I do... I wanna kind of look at it. It's a big jump, and I don't know if there's a way we can do it incrementally or... But just take a look at what these other ones are making.
So the problem with incrementally is you can't just give pay raises to the deputies. And that's who I need to most pay raise to, because not only do I have to stop the bleed for the people leaving right now, and which I just had to leave here this year. So I can't... I have to stop the bleed, but I have to be able to go to LETI and to Lincoln and say, "Come work for me." Because right now, I show up and you have Highway Patrol in Boone County and St. Charles and all these other ones showing up, and they're paying well over $48,000, and it's hard for me to compete with that. I've had... I've actually had a person tell me that they would like to come work for me, but, you know, they can get $10,000 more going to the PD.
So I think with the Quarter Center City, I think you could probably have some deputies just jump over to JCPD, and so I...
Especially since they're doing a $10,000 sign bonus.
Yeah.
So if...
Yeah.
I will lose people.
Yeah. So I'm okay with it for now. Just next year, if... Depending on how it affects your budget, you know, we don't come asking for a while.
No, no. I think I looked at this... Betsy's looked at this. Bo's looked at this. I've come to each one of you. I've had Kristen look at this. I'm definitely going up. I mean, there's a... Actually, Kristen and I were going back and forth if it's 1.1 million versus 921,000. So we actually, whenever we started doing this, we actually... We came in at, it was like, I don't even remember what the number was, 847,000, but that was for everybody in the department. And so after talking with her, I went ahead and took the civilians off right now, but I will be talking about it in 2023 for sure. If the money's there, I gotta have some money for my civilians, too.
And you had said you would not do a COLA for them next year. Can we do that?
I would be okay if anybody that's getting a raise on May...
Done it before. I did a public works two or three years ago.
Okay.
I would be comfortable. I would be comfortable in saying that anybody that's in uniform that gets a raise in one May, they would waive the 3% or the COLA, sorry.
Sheriff, quick question on this. The first box here on the compression raise, the two to four is 1,200, the four-plus is 2,400. Is that 2,400 more, or is it a 1,200 stacked on a 1,200?
No, it's 1,200 or 2,400.
It is 2,400.
So anybody with four-plus years would get the base pay plus the 2,400.
Okay. And prior to that, they did get the 1,200, too, right?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So after four-plus, it's the equivalent of 3,600, because...
No, no, sir. I would say... I would... We were looking at anybody that has two to four years in is gonna get a $1,200 raise.
Oh, now.
Period. Right now.
Okay, I got it. All right. All right. Okay, that's an immediate calculation.
Yes, that would be part of the formula for these pay raises.
Got it, okay. And that's built into the numbers that you've pushed here, because you know who has... Who's got two-plus and who's got four?
Yes, that's built into the 402 or 4,600.
Okay. Just a curiosity, where did you find the two? I don't know. I don't want their names, but you did hire two. Where did you...
One was from Corrections.
One's from Lowe's.
Yeah, one's from Lowe's and one's from Corrections.
Okay. Well, you and I have gone over these numbers a bunch of times. I do think, you know, when you mention where they're leaving, where they're going when they leave you, and it's quite a list.
Yes, sir.
Okay. It'd really be sad if you were losing them to Lowe's.
Yeah.
It's a little sad when you lose them inside the family of the county.
Well, I was hoping y'all would pass an ordinance on that, that they can't do that no more, unless they wanna come work for me, then it's okay.
Okay.
There's some different jumps in there, too, going from... After I had to look at a little more this weekend, too, you know, the jailers jumping 7,000, and deputies 9,200, and Corporal Sergeant, they're all going up at even bigger numbers. I don't know, it just seems weird.
Well, you gotta understand, Jeff, the base pay for the deputy's 38.8, but they're not making that right now. They're making more than that. It's not gonna be a jump like that. They have a... They're making more money than the base pay right now.
But it is a jump.
Oh, it is, definitely. I mean, and you have to. The corporals, the sergeants, lieutenants, they gotta have a jump, too. I can't have deputies making the same amount of money. We just went through that when we hired, when we promoted the lieutenant, if you remember. We promoted the lieutenant, and he was already at 56 as a sergeant. So we had to do the $2,000 bump that the commission had stated they wanted to do. And so... And I was good with that, but our compression right now, our salaries right now aren't correct. They're not good. That's why we're trying to fix them. I can't have deputies making the same amount of money as my corporals, and the corporals making as much.
I mean, I understand that, but just try to fix that, take care of the ones that we do have then, and do that in a different way rather than on the...
How?
Proposed base pay. I'm not really sure.
That's the problem, because I'm gonna tell you, we were beating our heads to death over this. We pulled...
That's what happened to you?
No, it was a tree.
I understand.
But there's a... We were at a rainstorm, and this was the... And the problem is, and this is what I told my staff whenever I was working on this, I'm working on the pay for the future. I can't worry about the past, because there's gonna be some people that's gonna be upset because I'm gonna have people that's been here 15 years, and they're gonna be making the same amount of money as someone that's been here before. And that's not fair. But I can't fix the pay for the past. I can only fix it for the future. So that's what my intent is, is try to fix it for the future. And the way you do that is, is there's gonna be people that aren't gonna get as much pay raise as others, and people are just gonna get... They're gonna get screwed. But I'm trying to do it equally as I can. But we... Guys, we gotta have it. I mean, I'm already reducing services out in the county by getting rid of the Towson-Wardville position, and that's a position that's not even paid by us. That's paid for by Towson-Wardville, and I can't fill that position. The SROs are gonna have to come out and work the road during the summer because we're already... We're at 2021, March of 2021, we were at 3,800 calls for service. March of 2022, we're at 5,200. So our call volume's going up, and we're going into... And we're not even in the busy year yet, and I'm down in patrol division. So I need help, and I have the money.
Show me the money. Well, here's what I'm gonna do, Sheriff. I'm gonna make a motion to adopt your salary schedule grid effective May 1.
Yes, sir.
And then we can... If there's a second, then we can discuss it.
I will second.
Discussion.
Are you gonna do that with the condition of no COLA raises for them, if there are COLA raises in 2023?
As presented. As presented. And there... I think your sales tax revenue for the current year is well understated because it's set at what it was last year, and as you say, it's up 7%, which I think is equivalent of about 350,000, I think, somewhere in that neighborhood. So I think 80... 22 is gonna be okay. It is gonna take some fancy calculating for your 23 budget. That'll be an interesting...
Well, I agree with what you're saying, but I think the way we're gonna have to look at it is, is every year, when we go into our budget, we look at our personnel first, and then everything comes second.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is you look at your budget, and then there might be some things you're gonna have to...
I mean, that's how... Truthfully, that's how you guys look.
Yeah.
You look at the personnel first, and you look at...
Yeah, and... But I will say this, you're using that... You say 54% of your budget is personnel versus other. I think you've got a lot more operating costs because you're feeding 150 people a day and none of the other departments are, and you're clothing them and so on and so forth. So it's not a good... You can make that comparison, but I would expect your salary percentage to be a lot lower than some of the other areas because of that.
Okay.
Well, I don't know. It's just a big jump, and I'd like to look at it some more. I'm gonna probably just say no for that reason today, Sheriff, so make sure I don't speed on the way home.
Okay.
Walking back to your office.
I'm going to get that moped that's got the governor on it, so that's the only reason though, John. We had we had a good conversation last week about it, and I think we agreed on a lot of it, that we do need to fix some stuff on it, and we need to be able to hire people. We're not even able to keep our jailers right now taking care of people. We're talking about building out the interstitial layer. So if we can't fill the jailers in one area, how are we going to staff that?
Absolutely correct, sir. That's another reason why.
It's going to be a problem down the road, but.
That's another reason why if we're even thinking about building out that facility down there, I gotta start building up my base now. So if hopefully this pay raise to the 42 for the jailers will increase people coming to me. I'm even looking at expanding because usually I tell people, if you want to work the road in Jeff City, you have to live in in or in Cole County, you gotta live in Cole County. And I'm thinking about waiving that and doing a 20 mile or something because I got nobody, I have nobody applying.
So the difference between the jailer and a deputy is the deputy is certified.
That's correct.
So a jailer cannot be a deputy, but a deputy can be a jailer, right?
Uh, no, so a jailer can't be a deputy, but a deputy deputy can fill a jailer's slot, but he can't be, he can't be it. Well, I guess he could be, yeah, we could.
So if all the deputy positions are full and somebody wants to come get their foot in the door and work as a jailer.
Yeah, that's true.
So.
That's a good point, I didn't think.
I just, I don't understand why anybody would want to work as a jailer, period, because you're stuck inside and with some of the best people around.
And I'm going to tell you, that just goes to show you the the amount of professionals and the motivation that some of my staff have down there with the with the with the sergeants and the lieutenants, the corporals down there, and how they're able to motivate and keep these guys coming back. They're doing their job every day under, let's say, adverse conditions because of staffing. There's been a couple of times, not a couple, there's been a few times that we were down to a minimum of five. We had 157 people in custody at my facility, and I had five people working. That's one person for the master control, one person for satellite. That leaves three people to handle the whole pod. So that's we need to look at addressing. I'm hoping once we get the full staff, we can address the 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 minimum staffing and take that up because three.
Give Betsy a gun and don't give Greg Gaffey a gun, no.
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 I don't think no Greg should get a gun. I'm not saying anybody in personal, I'm just saying.
Sheriff, years ago, prior to you being here, the county ran into the feds with respect to the the jail conditions and so on. Is the size of the jailer staff ever one of those issues with the feds?
It was, it's part of the formula for us to be able to get to be able to get the and keep the the US Marshals, and I think that's why they went with five, was because five was the minimum that they would accept. So should we have ever opened our jail with five minimum staffing, I would have said no, but that was a that was between Mark, I think it was Mark and Greg who made that decision. We'll blame Greg since he's not here right now. And Brian.
Yeah, Brian's not here. Okay, any other discussion? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose.
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry, Sheriff.
Thank you to two of you.
Porsche 911s, pursuit vehicles. Okay, approval approval of hotspot with FirstNet for the county help.
Hello, so for some time we've had a hotspot that we pay for out of the public health emergency preparedness contract, and it's it's outdated. We pay $78.24 a month for the hotspot. Well, because of Brian, our wonderful IT director, we found out that that FirstNet.
There he is.
Is available for us, so we can upgrade the hotspot to the new 5G. We'll pay for that of our ELC ED contract, and then the new fee moving forward that will still be paid for by the emergency preparedness grant is $38 a month. So moving forward, we'll save $40 a month by getting a new hotspot and changing our contract to run through that FirstNet program. So I just need approval to proceed with that.
Yeah, I'm like, well, why wouldn't we?
Right. I don't have anything to sign. It's all electronic through FirstNet and AT&amp;T. I just need your approval.
So you're asking for approval to save money?
Yes.
Yeah.
You got it.
All right.
Something seems fishy.
I know. Well, we have to pay, we have to buy a new hotspot, but it's covered under the DHSS contract. I said, the ELC ED contract will pay for that, so.
Yeah, because I got Brian's budget, so.
No, 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 I have, I need to send that.
Why are you hiding back there?
I need to send that.
As long as y'all check it out, that just seems really low, so.
That's the same contract that we're using the iPads for environmental, so.
Okay, I mean, with FirstNet, it seemed like somehow there was added fees on that stuff with FirstNet and AT&amp;T.
Brian's saying no. No, the paper is saying the paper we have, I have.
Go to AT&amp;T for me and.
Yeah, I have the the contract. It's $38 a month.
Yeah, I'm like, uh.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good with that, absolutely.
We're fine, okay.
A little leery of it, sounds too good to be true.
Oh, well. You still believe in Santa Claus, don't you?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Approval of sole source ad for Striker Pro Care Services.
We're just needing approval today to run the ad for sole source for preventive maintenance on 11 CPR devices for EMS. The amount of the sole source is $12,861.45.
Make a motion to approve the sole source ad for Striker Pro Care Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval and signing of amendment with Aramark Uniform Services.
This is an amendment to the contract with Aramark Uniform Services. We awarded this at the end of last year for public works for their uniforms. At the time of the awarding, we didn't think insurance was necessary for the garments. They kind of just pay for ruins and damages, but with further review, Eric and Carrie think that the insurance would actually benefit Public Works. Instead of being charged for the ruins, we're just paying in the future, we'd pay a flat rate. I think Eric has all those.
Additionally, whenever we change over contracts, they come in grade every piece, every garment that we have, and we get docked a certain amount based on the condition of it. And so the insurance just covers us, any damage or any replacement that they have to do throughout the year, it's covered. And there's it allows us to budget a little bit better, and there's there's no issues at the end of the year with having to buy back stuff or pay for all the stuff that comes in that's damaged.
And what is the cost of insurance?
Uh, it's $3,750.24 a year, but that would be prorated. It would just start first of April, so it would be three quarters of that amount.
How many do you have to replace a year? Have you kind of kept track of that to see what the difference is? I mean, if it's how much is a pair of pants if it gets a hole in it or a shirt gets a sleeve ripped off or whatever?
Pants are $80, I know that for sure. The others, I don't know what the cost is, but we, especially with our mechanics, with oil and everything. Okay, short sleeve shirt.
So if they get a stain, they replace it and give you a new.
Yeah, any any worn out clothing, any ripped, anything that has to be replaced, it's covered under this insurance.
So is insurance less than what we're paying now for damaged and?
Our our thought is it could be a little less, it could be a little more, but in at the end of the day, we don't have to worry about budget less or more each year. It is covered. We think probably at the end of the day, it probably to our advantage, it would be better to have the insurance. And in addition, in work, talking with Aramark, there was nobody else that bid on this contract except them, and they only did it because they had the business already and didn't want to lose it. But they said going into the future, no companies will do any of this without insurance anymore. So it will be required that we do it.
We'll have to put it in our RFP for next time.
Well, I'd recommend going going ahead and starting this up, and that way we have it recovered. At the end of the term of the contract, they don't have to come in grade everything, and then we get charged for that amount.
And the annual cost again, the 30?
$3,750.24, 3,750.24 per year.
Who decides if it gets replaced? I mean, if your mechanic comes in and says, I want a clean shirt without a stain, they keep sending this one back, I want a different one, do they get a different one or do they decide that?
We can decide that.
So you may have had other ones that you could have returned that you went ahead and.
In some cases, the employee would just keep on using it rather than turn it down just because we know we'd get docked for it, or, you know, he may just keep on using it. This allows us to kind of have better control or making sure we get good clean looking uniforms.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
We got a lot of employees out there with uniforms on, so. And a motion to, or I'll make a motion to sign the amendment with Aramark Uniform Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna skip around a little bit just to get the sign of contract with Meyer Electric Generator for the Health Department done, because I think that's last thing for you. Is that what you're here for, Greg? Okay.
Um, we're just needing signature for the contract with Meyer Electric. The generator is ordered, so the total was $21,327, and they have to have it, the project complete it 45 days once we receive the generator, because right now it's kind of in the air of how long it'll.
Yeah, they said 42 weeks to get the generator.
How many?
42.
How many kilowatts was that? You remember? 130? Is it more than that?
I think it's 40 or 60.
And how much was it?
21.
No, that's just for the, that's just Meyer. How much was that?
It's a switch too.
No, total was 42. The generator was about 21, and installation was about 21, right?
I made transfer switch and the generator.
So this is just the installation with Meyer. This is not the purchase of the generator.
Yeah, you don't remember how much it was.
I think it was about, they were both about 21. I think total was 42.
43 something.
Yeah.
But it was less than 130 KW? I'll get with you on it. I'll tell you a reason later. You might know where there's one. We already bought it.
We also talked again yesterday about that AC unit for the vaccine room. Greg was getting a quote on it. We talked about, we talked about the generator.
Okay, and do we have anything coming up with that fence for that back up on top?
We've looked at it. Jeff, I'd like to pick your brain afterwards to see.
That won't take long.
See if my idea will work better. I think it's more secure, and I think it'd be more pleasing. I was out there yesterday looking at the siding. We may have to replace some of that siding too out there before long.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. I know we were looking at it last week. I never heard anything about it, but you had some issues with family stuff, so figured I'd just ask you real quick today what we were at on that.
The generator was 22,000, sorry to interrupt, 22,322 dollars, and it was a.
40, 40 or 60. Should say on there.
40.
Okay, so 130 is way more than we needed out there. You need a 130? I'll talk, like I said, I'll talk to you about that later.
Okay.
We we backed it off, got a little frugal on it, because I mean, the maybe the big one would take care of the whole building, but we could live without AC and parts of it if the power went out, but we couldn't live without AC or whatever in the vaccine room and the computer room.
Just for the vaccine and server room.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, this isn't just for the Health Department. If we have something else in general, might be something worth looking into for the price tag.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, you need a motion to sign? Do we do it? All I'll offer a motion to sign the contract with Meyer Electric for 21,327 for the installation of the generator at the Health Department.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, okay. Now we will do discussion of tax credit sponsorship for Jefferson City Soccer Complex Project.
Thank you all. My name is Kyle Berenson. I'm a volunteer member of the board for United Capital City Soccer Club, a local soccer club here in Jeff City, looking to build a four to six com fields complex, the old Rockory Highway 54. I've been working on this for roughly two and a half years now. It's really come along good in the last year. We have a little over $3 million in our pocket now of a six to eight million dollar total revenue. We feel this will turn the town into a valuable sports destination, very easy access, numerous hotels. The project would be an economic engine for our city. As you read through the packets that we are leaving you, this project has great momentum from local, regional, and even state support, ranging from the Jefferson City Visitor and Convention Bureau, Regional Planning Commission, and the city who we're also working with. In addition, we have multiple letters of intent to bring out of town tournaments here validating if we build it, they will come. Right now, our teens travel six to eight weeks every spring in Paul to Kansas or Spring or St. Louis, spending a lot of money every weekend. We'd like to keep all the money here and allowing kids that have families that can't afford to travel every weekend, a place to play competitive soccer. As I was saying, the total budget for four fields is approximately 8.5, six fields 10.5 million. We're hoping with going in conjunction with you guys on applications with the Missouri Department Finance Board, that we can apply for tax credits, which will help us raise additional funds. This this complex would literally provide hundreds of jobs, ranging from referees to administrative and program professionals, as well as 100% of the construction of this project is all going to be dealt with vendors from Jefferson City area. This complex has very good statewide and further support. It's going to encompass as many nine surrounding states coming to Jefferson City. Like most importantly, this complex will provide direct economic boost for our hometown. That has been a long time coming and even more evident in the wake of the pandemic. Joe Lopez, who works, been working with me on this project, he might be able to explain, and Luke Holzschneider, who's helping us assist him with this, explained the tax credit application a little more than I can do. I was the one that started this project, and now I got a pretty good team helping me to get it done. Through, I mean, based on calculations derived from the Destinations International Vent Calculator that the Convention and Visits Bureau here did, I mean, it's going to impact our economy, crucially in sports. We're looking at 11 million, 600,000 dollars in revenue in the first year of this complex. And last year, our total sports revenue was 6.5, so it's almost doubling it taxable revenue, taxable income in our town. The return on investment is great. We have plenty of documentation supporting everything that we're doing. We've put a lot of time in this, and so we ask for your support in it. Joe might be able to explain a little more about the tax credit application.
Yeah, and I'd like to defer to Luke also, but basically our request today is that you guys sponsor the tax credits. Obviously, we are not a municipality, we're a 501(c)(3), and so we need your support in that. We want to make sure that you guys are well aware there's no liability in this, but you're representing us as a sponsor, and that's what we ask for. We did actually prepare a draft document, which I provided today for everyone, but it is in draft. We're waiting on some recommendations back. We've also provided it to your attorney for review to make sure that there's no, you know, issues at hand. So really, at the end of the day, what this allows us to do, if you would grant us this opportunity, is when we push towards the campaign, which we're about to begin, it allows somebody to look back at their contributions, and a lot of times, based on their position in business and their position financially, they might up their contribution based on the tax incentive. So we would love to have this opportunity. We have yet to go to the board and make this formal request because we can't do it unless we have your support. So that's what we're asking for today. And then Luke, if you want to expand on.
Yep, and so I can help talk through some of the tax credit component of this, but as I've mentioned numerous times with each of you individually, and then both, you know, at previous commission meetings is, you know, looking at how we can improve the, you know, kind of economic outlook for central Missouri. It's not just industrial. By no means, I think, the direction which we can grow is, you know, through a lot of community development efforts, which will lead to, you know, long-term industrial and new job opportunities, but looking at ways that we can grow revenue and grow really the the appearance and the attraction of central Missouri is, you know, through efforts just like this. And so have had the opportunity to engage with the team over the past few weeks and actually past, you know, couple months, and, you know, there's there's a lot of traction behind it. There's a lot of interest, there's a lot of support, and there's already some kind of early stage indication of donation that's going to be coming along. So what we're here to, as Joe kind of mentioned, is is seeking support, not today, but, you know, potentially at the next commission meeting to formalize that support for the county to sponsor a contribution tax credit application to the Missouri Development Finance Board. You know, there would be the, we would seek a formal resolution by the county at an upcoming commission meeting, expressing that intent desire to support, and then finalize the tax credit application. But, you know, the long and short of it is that approved projects through the Missouri Development Finance Board would be eligible to support campaign contributions. So donations that come into the project would be supported at a reimbursement of 50% of their donation would be returned to the donor contributor in the form of a tax credit. So as Joe mentioned, it's a way to drive new donations and potentially increase those donations that. So, as Joe mentioned, it's a way to drive new donations and potentially increase those donations that may be in discussions currently. So, in order for the project to be eligible, it has to be officially applied for from a local political form of government or state agency. And I think the county has had a lot of, and has expressed a lot of interest in the project and what's going on and really feel has been a good partner, and so that's why we would seek the county's support for this.
Just to be clear, Luke, the campaign is to raise contributions for this effort. It's not what other folks often think about when you talk about a campaign.
No, it, it is for the project. So, within the application would be defining what the project is, which is the construction and development of a multi-field soccer complex.
Do you know, is the city going to endorse this thing or, you're looking for the county to be the applicant?
Mm-hmm.
You look for, do, will you look for other political subdivisions within this area to support or endorse?
Yes, we, so part of, and speaking with the finance board, is we would want that kind of formalized support or conveyed support from the city. So, it's, it's clearly indicating that there's no objection from the city in pursuit of the project, but they're just not the sponsor applicant.
We can just to a quicker, and there is no cost to the county, so.
Correct.
Yeah, I've, I've participated in things like this in the past, so I don't have any problem with it.
And right now, the kind of thought is to begin, so we would submit the draft application, once all parties agree to the, you know, the contents of what's provided in the application to the Missouri Development Finance Board. It would be more of an informal submission, so they, they receive draft applications. They allot a period of time for any feedback, so some constructive criticism on applications before it would ever be presented or put on an agenda for a Missouri Development Finance Board meeting. So, over the next, you know, week or two, we would look to finalize the draft application locally and then get it in the hands of the finance board to review informally.
Will this fall in their current fiscal year? Does it get, it does?
Correct.
Before June thirty?
So, the, the tax credits are on an actual calendar year?
Oh, that's right. We talked about that.
Yeah.
Okay. And MBFE throws a, the reserve is a million of the ten for small communities to start with. Is that right? And we'd fit under that.
Correct.
Under fifty thousand.
There's a ten, so the, the program, the contribution tax credit program within the finance board is, they are authorized ten million in tax credits per year is what they can authorize. And of that ten million, one million is set aside at the beginning in reserve for rural communities. By definition, their definition, that's fifty thousand or less city population. And so, county-wise, I can't remember what the county limitation is, but based on the project location, this project would meet the rural parameters.
Okay.
But I don't think we also have to limit ourselves to that million.
Right.
So, I, the initial thought was to apply for two million in tax credits, which ultimately leverages a total of four million dollars, two million also being reimbursed in the form of tax credits. But it is a statewide program, ten million per year, so, you know, personally, I, I, two million is, I think, a kind of high watermark that we would seek some favorable response from, but there is the potential that they would reduce or ask for a reduction in request at some point. But they're never going to tell us to go up, so we're gonna start.
I'm good with those. It's gonna be a nonprofit entity as well.
Yeah, so.
And you've worked with the YMCA and everybody else that it might affect to make sure we're not stepping on any toes, and they're actually on board with everybody. So, I mean, I think it's, we've had several meetings with this. I think it'd be a huge benefit to the community.
And we've had, we've had meetings with the city too. I mean, we've had no objection from anybody throughout the whole state. Everybody's supporting it.
So, just get ready if you get this done, because you're having about six other sports or athletics that's gonna come to you and say, hey, we need something for volleyball.
Archery, archery, we keep hearing that from.
Yeah, so find a place to build a huge Butler building.
There's plenty of room down there.
Yeah.
There is exactly, another conversation like that going on right now too.
Good. That's, that's needed.
Yeah, there's a, it's gonna be awesome down there. It's gonna really drive a lot of money in town.
If we can work with the council as well to, the county's council on a resolution and some of that language.
Yeah, I'm good with doing any action today, so.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
So, did a, a date to be determined. We will officially agree to be the applicant.
You know, I'm not going to speak on behalf of, my thought would be to target, you know, the resolution framework and have that being able to be voted on next week if possible.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd go ahead and add it to the agenda, and if for some reason it's not ready, we can pull it off there.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Good idea, Jeff.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, we will go back. I had forgotten. Chris said he had an appointment, but signing of non-company agreement.
Take care.
And this is something we do every year, so.
I can just get the slide over to him.
I guess Jill, review it. I mean, if it's the same one, then I don't know.
It is, and he's got an alphabet seen in it, and our grade, and particular commercial property. He's gonna have to say them all.
Yeah.
These are actually the properties that we had for twenty twenty-one at the Board of Equalization, so we're still dealing with the twenty twenty-one appeals. So, that's what these appraisals are for, and it generally takes about this long to do it, sometimes a little less, but he's been pretty busy this year. So, and I'd probably, depending on whether we get a lot of appeals at BOE this year, we may need to add an addendum to the contract for him to handle any of those commercial properties from the twenty twenty-two Board of Equalization. But this is for the twenty twenty-one properties that we needed appraisals from.
Okay, I'm good.
I'm good.
Any questions?
Yeah.
My question to sign the non-company agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Quick and to the point.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate you making an exception for this morning.
Gotcha.
Dr. Wayne.
Yeah. Okay, Rock Island Trail Assessment Meeting with the Missouri State Parks. Who is this?
Morning, folks.
Bring it to you. I can do it if you'd like. Hi, I'm Melanie Smith. I'm the Deputy Regional Director for Missouri State Parks, and then I have been serving as the Katy Trail Coordinator, although we have a new Katy Trail Coordinator that's with us today. And I'm the point person kind of for the Rock Island Corridor project at this point, so we just wanted to share a little bit of information. We'll go ahead and introduce the rest of our staff that are here with us today.
David Kelly, I'm State Park Director.
Kathy Brent, Katy Trail Coordinator.
Zane Price, Real Estate Manager.
Ryan Dennehy, Planning and Action Chief.
Great. Thanks for having us today. Okay, just click it. Oh, roll. All right, today, we're gonna cover a few topics, kind of trail development, what we're looking at for trail development for the Rock Island Corridor, grants and funding update, and then talk a little bit about community development, because we do have a few communities that are in Cole County that are not incorporated cities, so certainly we'll be looking for assistance there. This is the Rock Island Corridor map that includes both the Katy Trail and the Rock Island. That red line on the top is Katy Trail State Park. Over here on the left-hand side, the blue section is the Rock Island Spur, which is a forty-seven and a half mile section of Rock Island Trail that we opened in two thousand and sixteen. The orange up on the top is actually part of the same rail corridor, but it's managed by Jackson County Rock Island Trail Authority. And they have, I think, about thirteen miles that actually connects up to Arrowhead Stadium. And then the green line on the bottom is that new one hundred and forty-four mile corridor that DNR accepted in, on December fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-one. So, it kind of illustrates that big loop, how it will connect on both sides. So, one of the big differences between Katy Trail and Rock Island Trail is that on the Katy Trail, the right-of-way is a hundred foot wide, pretty much at any given spot, fifty feet from the center of the main line in both directions. Each of our trail communities typically has a wider right-of-way, at least twice that big. That is where there was a train station at one point, and we use those for our trailheads. The Rock Island Corridor is not the same. So, when it was transferred, before it was transferred to us, many parcels were sold off. You can see, this is the map of Eugene. The blue hashed areas, and actually, the blue hashed area is what was transferred to DNR, and the red hashed areas are owned by someone else. So, we don't have any control over that property. So, you can see that in many cases, we have a much narrower right-of-way to work with. Here in Eugene, there were that little thin blue strip is, that's leading up to the tunnel. And I don't have my notes, but I'm gonna guess it's about sixteen feet wide. That's traditionally what was accepted. So, it's wide enough to build a trail, but not wide enough to do too much else on that section. And then I also have provided Henley, because I understand that Henley is also unincorporated, so it's kind of the same deal. Red parcels were sold off, people, these, a lot of them were sold to private corporations, but some of them were sold to cities, to people who live next to it. A variety of circumstances. So, that's really one of the reasons that we're coming out and doing this, this community planning process. Let me back up. So, we're planning to meet with and have been meeting with every one of the communities that's on, along the Rock Island Corridor, and we're sharing this exact information with each one of them, so they have a full picture of what it is, that the corridor looks like. Because in many cases, we're gonna need assistance from the local community, the local counties, the local, local folks to figure out where makes the most sense to have trailheads and, and other access areas, parking areas and things to the Rock Island Corridor. Because we do have such an interesting, you know, right-of-way in the communities. And I do have a map that includes all of the communities, so if there's another one on the corridor that is of interest to you, we could certainly look at that as well. When we go out to the communities and visit with them, information that we share, and I do have this as handouts if you're interested, we share information about what the trail looks like. We have several communities that are excited to get going and are interested in building the, the trail within their community as soon as they're able. They're looking at grants and things. So, we provide specifications that show what the trail would need to look like, what the base looks like, what the surfacing looks like, the shoulders and the ditches. We also provide information about what's at a trailhead. You know, everywhere that we have a trailhead on the Katy Trail, and we think this would be the similar on the Rock Island line, gotta have parking somewhere to park your car, gotta have water. That's pretty critical for folks who are cycling long distances. Bathrooms are nice. People prefer flushing toilets, but vaults also do in a pinch, but bathrooms are important. And then we typically also have an informational, an info depot is what we call these structures. This is the one, I believe, from Pleasant Hill. They provide a little bit of shade if there's no trees around there, a bench so people can sit down beneath their lunch, take a load off and rest. And then also some map panels. Typically, we have one map panel that has that, probably have that whole loop map that I shared earlier. And there's also a smaller, more detailed map that would show, if I get on the trail right here and I go to the left, where will I end up? If I go to the right, where will I end up? And then there's typically a community map, so at North Jeff, it has, if I get off here, how do I get into Jefferson City and how do I connect with the things that I might be looking for as a trail visitor? And then the fourth panel, in this case, is usually used to talk about the local community, maybe the history of the community. If there's some special landmark or story that's affiliated with the area, we can share that sort of information, and people are usually really interested to learn more about the communities that they're visiting. As we look for development, obviously, one of the big things is bridges, so we have lots of bridges that are on the Rock Island Corridor. These are much more substantial bridges in a lot of cases than we see on the Katy in many ways, longer. They are, they do also seem to be more sturdily built, if that's a word, because it was a freight line. So, you know, the base structure and the substructure seems to be more sturdy. I will tell you that I'm a parks professional, not an engineer, so every bridge will have to have a, a professional assessment for that. Picture on the left is outside of Pleasant Hill. That's what it looked like before we renovated the Rock Island Spur and opened it, and then the picture on the right is kind of the end goal. So, concrete decking on those existing rail bridges and oxidized steel safety railings on either side to keep people on the trail corridor. I did include here a picture of the ma, big bridge that's in Cole County, so the Osage River Bridge. We have been out and taken a few looks at that. That looks, to me, looks pretty similar to that bridge that was on the left in that last slide. So, obviously, once it has an assessment, it'll need concrete decking, it'll need safety railing. We'll leave that middle span that has the through truss there, but we, and we certainly don't want to impede the view there. It's a really pretty view, but we'll have to have safety railings as it leads up to that.
The Rock Island also had passenger trains up until the sixties.
Yes, but it was primarily designed for freight. That's why I think the bridges are a little bit, seem bulkier and sturdier. And then I just included this picture just for informational purposes, since this is in Eugene. This is the Eugene Tunnel.
I don't know anything about that.
You don't know anything about that tunnel? That's why I shared the pictures today, so we, it was. One thousand six hundred and sixty-five feet long. The good news is it is all concrete lined, so that's a bonus. Seems to be in pretty good shape, obviously. Things that we'll have to think about, lighting. So, the Katy Trail Tunnel, if you've been to Roachport, it's about two hundred and forty-three feet long, so this is substantially longer than that. Can't, you can kind of see the dot in the middle. When David and I took our first trip there, we poorly planned. I only had my cell phone flash light, and let me tell you, you need, need more lights than that to visit the tunnel. So, probably looking at concrete through the center of the tunnels, lighting in the middle. Jackson County has a tunnel that they've added lighting in it. They use a motion sensor light at the, either end to start those lights, so I just included those for fun. Road crossings, typically anywhere that we have a road crossing, we'll have some sort of a barrier that encourages our visitors to slow down and pay attention to traffic. The picture there on the right is what we did on the Rock Island Spur. Those are metal, we call them squeeze gates, because they're designed to force the person that's approaching them to slow down and make sure they're lined up to get through the center of the gates. The opening is four feet wide. I know it looks kind of narrow in the picture, but it is wide enough for a bicycle to get through for sure. And we typically put those at road crossings. Sometimes you'll see driveway crossings. You'll see utility line crossings, sewer lines, water lines, anytime, anything, fiber optics, anytime, anything has to cross the right-of-way, they'll have a license for that use. And Zane is our real estate manager, so he kind of coordinates all the licensing for those uses. There were hundreds and hundreds of licenses already in place that Ameren was managing, and they transferred all those to us with the right-of-way, so we have boxes of those that we're still kind of sorting out. And we've already had a few new applications for driveways that need to cross the, the right-of-way. Fencing, we're sharing fencing information with each of the communities. For new fencing, we have a policy that's already been in place for a number of years on the Katy, where if you need new fencing, we budget money every year for fencing, and then it's on a first-come, first-served basis. We meet with the landowner on site and talk about what the need might be for fencing, and then we, we purchase materials using the state's purchasing requirements, and the, the landowner installs it at a mutually agreed-upon location. I always say that because it's not always on that hundred-foot mark. You know, if it's a rock cut area, you can't exactly get it at the hundred-foot mark on either side, because it could be halfway up the, the rock cut, and that doesn't make good sense. So, we have some flexibility in that. One unique thing, you know, on the Rock Island is there is a state statute that requires we'll be maintaining the fencing. We're still figuring out how that's going to work. We don't have any staff or funding today, so those are the things that we still have to figure out. We're certainly taking names and addresses, contact information for folks who have property that are interested in fencing, so we can reach back out to them when we know more. And this is an illustration. We shared this at all of our public meetings. We traditionally do four or five strand barbed wire, depending on what the, the landowner's request is, because it's, it's designed for agricultural use. Allowed uses for Katy Trail and for Rock Island Corridor, walking, bicycling, Katy Trail allows equestrian in some selected areas, and the Rock Island Spur already allows equestrian use. So, that's one thing we're meeting with communities, is to see what the interest might be for equestrians as we kind of make those plans, where does it make sense to allow equestrian use or not? On the Katy Trail from Clinton to the Missouri State Fairgrounds and then Tebets to Portland, kind of in the central Missouri area, allow equestrian use. Things we have to consider there, and you know, larger footprint for a trailhead, because horse trailers take a lot more room than, than vehicu, you know, cars with bicycle racks, as well as larger areas, you know, more visitation sometimes is an issue for equestrian use, because everybody yields to the horse, and so more people makes it harder to yield, yield to those guys. those guys. We anticipate we'll operate the Rock Island Corridor much like we do the Katy Trail, so some of the things we did to kind of ease some of those landowner concerns were no overnight use, we expect the Rock Island will be the same, so Katy's a day-use park, we're open thirty minutes before sunrise to thirty minutes after sunset every day, and we anticipate that will be the same. We don't provide any overnight lodging or camping facilities on Katy Trail, we think that'll be the same on the Rock Island. That's where we really look to local communities and private business owners to offer camping, Airbnb. David was saying he lives in Hartsburg, and there's now five Airbnbs in Hartsburg that weren't there, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago. Fencing policy, we kind of already talked about that, and then, once we get under construction and development, we will have boundary markers just like the Katy. So the top two pictures there are what our boundary markers look like. The orange one, you know, end of public use, and that blue one says state park boundary. We put those back-to-back, and then we kind of zigzag them down the corridor, so you can always see the next one on the opposite side as you travel down the right-of-way. From a staffing perspective, Katy Trail is the longest, skinniest state park in our system, and Rock Island Corridor will be its twin, but on the south side, so we will divide that into sections for management, and each section will be assigned to a Missouri State Park. That'll allow them to share some maintenance staff and equipment back and forth between the state park and its remote operation here on the trail. Law enforcement, our state park rangers will be patrolling, they've already been out making contacts with the communities that are along the right-of-way. They already work with Cole County, some with the Katy Trail and North Jefferson area, so. And then volunteers, of course, are a critical piece. Grants and funding, I might let David, if you want to take, I'm getting ahead of myself, an update on the funding.
Yeah, just kind of where we're at on the funding situation, we did receive a $2.7 million ADA grant that we announced when we took the corridor back in December. We also just recently received a $126,000 grant from the Department of Health from CDC, and then our foundation raised about a million dollars, and so we have a request this year in the budget, and that money went into the state park, excuse me, the Rock Island Endowment Fund, and that'll be for staff, so I think we've requested two rangers, two maintenance, and a manager, a Rock Island coordinator through this budget cycle. And when Mel talked about, we don't have staff do fencing, so once we, if that's approved, and once we get those staff, then we'll have staff to go out and do maintenance and fencing, and then of course, two park rangers to help patrol it. You know, the big item right now that's working its way through the legislative process is the $69.2 million ARPA funding for the Rock Island, which is essentially from Eugene to Beaufort, so all through Cole County would be included as part of that. And we have a, we run a couple of grant programs, one's the RTP, the Rock Island Trail Program Grant, and we had, I think, two communities, Bell and Eldon applied for that this year. And then there's a Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant, which can't be used in the Rock Island, but it can be used in a community associated with the Rock Island. And then we've got some other grant opportunities we're handing out to the communities. And then our State Parks Foundation is still actively raising funds for the Rock Island to go into that severed Rock Island Endowment Fund that was set up a few years ago.
This is just a little bit more information about the RTP program, and we do have a handout with that if anybody would like a copy, and we provide this at each of the community as such, yeah, so that they have that resource. It's eighty-twenty money, so it only requires a twenty-five-year commitment, so that's probably the best fit. But then there are some other resources that we provide to them as well, that they can think about and consider applying. Community development, we just want to touch on this, because, well, visitation. So Katy Trail, we get, we average more than 400,000 folks every single year. COVID-2020, we had 700,000. Last year, I think it was over 500,000, so seeing a lot of folks that come to the trail, it's definitely a bucket list item for people. It's not uncommon to run into somebody that's out riding, and they're riding the whole thing, it's been on their list to accomplish, and check that off their to-do list, and they're enjoying it. I think that'll be the same for the Rock Island. And we have a unique partnership with the National Park Service, they've adopted the Rock Island Trail Corridor, and this might be a great program to really utilize, you know, in the Eugene community and/or Henley area, because they, this Rivers Trails and Conservation Assistance Program, let's see, I included, they can do all kinds of things. They've adopted the corridor, and they can meet with individual communities or interested people in these communities and help them with some of their project planning. Do they have a community park? Do they have public land that they'd like to have a community park at? How can they connect their public facilities that they have to the other things that they have in town? So where are the businesses? Where's the school? And they can really come up with some deliverables that ultimately could help communities apply for grants. They don't give grants, but they can provide that technical assistance to kind of help them get their paperwork in place to move forward with grants. And our contact, our contact is Ashley Newsom, she's based out of Columbia, so she's relatively local and able to, you know, come out and meet with folks as needed. So I think, we always like to share this quote at the end, because this is kind of where we're at, we're not sure how all the pieces are going to come together at the end of the day, and so we're looking to complete that planning process and meet with all the communities by June thirtieth. You know, here in Cole County, because we do have two communities that are unincorporated, we certainly are willing and able to go out and meet with them, but I think we'll need some assistance, obviously, from you to kind of figure out what makes the most sense for those communities, and where those meetings might be, what they might look like. Maybe it's informationally mail-out, maybe it's something that we do in public, we certainly are open to kind of your thoughts and questions. And I think that's really all the formal presentation. What kind of questions do you have for us?
So we've got, I think roughly, what, six to eight miles of Rock Island actually in Cole County, right? So the connector, how much of that will be in Cole County, connecting the Katy with the Rock Island?
Well, it won't connect in Cole County, based on this map, let's go back and look at it.
So the connector between two parts?
That doesn't mean that you couldn't, you know, work to develop a connector.
So the connector, connecting the Katy Trail to Rock Island won't go through Cole County at all?
Nope, you'll have two separate trails. Well, and the Katy, you know, North Jeff, so it's right there on the county line, but so that isn't necessarily in Cole County. They won't connect each other here, unless that's something that you want to work to develop, and that's certainly something you could consider.
Yeah. I didn't know if it connected through Cole County or where it was going to connect.
Not at this point. There are communities like in Washington, with the bike lane on the bridge now, they're looking to connect over to the Katy. And as we get further to the east, you know, there's a, we have a rail with rail approval to go into Union, then you're only about six miles, you know, from Washington there. So I think there are groups, that's not part of our planning process right now. Our planning process, which Ryan's kind of leading, between now and the end of June is to kind of come up with a master plan for that 144-mile corridor, identify where those trailheads make sense, and then kind of, we'll know then what the funding looks like moving forward, and then we can start talking about development.
So basically, it's just Eugene and Henley that are the, are two?
The Osage River Bridge, yeah, right, yeah. Are the two communities that are in Cole County, I think.
We were talking earlier, the Osage River Bridge, and then Eugene Tunnel will be big attractions for people who'll see, maybe not like it or anything like that, just sightseeing.
Yeah.
Take care of the snakes in the tunnel?
I have not encountered any snakes.
It's too cold in there for snakes.
Yeah, too cold.
I mean, so I heard.
Yeah, other folks have experienced that tunnel, too. It's pretty accessible, and Mel said it's in good shape. Two of the tunnels are, there are four tunnels on the corridor. The Jackson County Tunnel's done, which is, it was done about three years ago, so we have some good cost numbers from them, and they put like a twelve-foot concrete trail through it with the drainage and the lighting system. And so two of the tunnels are concrete line, the one that's out there between Argyle and Alameda is not.
It looks like a cave. I have pictures of it. It looks like they're caving.
A little more challenging, but.
It's got a curb in it, though, right?
It's got a bend.
You can't see all the way through.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
You don't know what's coming. There could be a snake down there.
Right.
Or a train.
Or a train. They did tell us, when we went and looked at that one, that there wasn't.
This would be really cool if you would let us take ATVs on them.
Yeah.
We do, one thing we've done on the Katy and done on Rock Island, we do offer tram tours for seniors and people who can't get out there, and we've done that, and we've been in Roachport for like ten years in the fall, we take about a thousand people over two days, and we expand that opportunity, Tuesdays on trail, we call it. We actually got another tram, our Parks Association purchased us, so folks that can't bicycle or can't walk, we have programmed the opportunities to get them out and see different sections, and we do that with different sections along the corridor.
Let's quick back up and.
Argyle's already got a couple eating, drinking establishments, so I would think Argyle would be probably excited.
They had those before a bike trail.
Well, I know.
And they do just fine.
Oh, I know.
I heard.
Some people just go to eat.
Does DNR have a dream as to when the first cyclist is going to be able to do a loop?
It'll depend on funding. I mean, we'll know more in June, kind of where we're at. Basically, you know, the Katy Trail is the longest developed rail trail in the nation, and we have, that's 240 miles plus the Rock Island Spur's 47, so 287 miles is already open, and that's, as Melanie said, you know, essentially San Luis Cansito. You know, this southern route, you know, provides that opportunity in between Jeff City and Eugene, and of course, on that other end, to have a future loop, but there's a couple gaps there. As Melanie mentioned, the Jackson County, there's a gap between Pleasant Hill and the Jackson County, about six miles, that Jackson County's kind of working on, and on the east end, between Mockens and Confluence, it's about six miles, and then when you get to Confluence, you can actually ride down to the arch. And so there's that potential, I'll be, after my time, that ride from Arrowhead Stadium to the arch, you know, and then of course, this potential of those connector loops. But as Melanie said, Katy Trail itself's already a destination, and I think we'll see with the addition, there's nothing like this in the world, you know, this system of rail trail that bring people in from all over. And I was, I've been around before the Katy, and kind of saw a lot around Hartsburg, and kind of saw, you know, what the benefits that trail brought to places like Hartsburg and Roachport and those communities. It's been pretty amazing, and I think we'll see the same thing with the Rock Island.
So the meetings you do in the communities are those mostly just informational, and you kind of go do something similar?
Very similar. We were in Gerald last night till about eight-thirty, it went really long, had about forty people, and talking to businesses, talking to chambers, talking to, you know, sometimes they're at a council meeting, and sometimes they're a special meeting, but it's just to be able to answer questions. A lot of the communities want to start right now, you know, the communities are just gathering information, and so, but, you know, if we can set one up in either a combo with Henley and Eugene, we'd love to do that, if there's interest in doing that, just.
Probably the school in Eugene would be, would be the best place to hold a meeting.
So any contacts you might have for, who would you reach out to to set those up?
How we would invite people to get there.
So the property that you do not have acquired, what happens if they don't want to give it up? Y'all going to condemn it, take it from them, or is this going to be, try to work something out with them?
You've got at least sixteen people that you're holding.
Yes, we have corridor through the whole thing. It's just where those trailheads are going to go may be determined by where we have enough room to have parking and bathrooms. So like Eugene, this is, you know, we have plenty of space. Clearly, it's on the, you know, on the bottom of this map, so we have to figure out how to get to that. But I believe that that's a public road that comes down there on the left-hand side, so as long as we have public access to the right-of-way that was transferred, then we should be able to develop that into a trailhead.
Yeah, we're not really interested in acquiring any additional land, and so what, that planning process.
So the red is just showing what the hundred-foot would be that you have for Katy Trail, comparing it?
The blue up here on the top would be, I think, a hundred, what, a hundred feet of the same.
What it shows is what the railroad is historically.
Because when we go to this one, so that blue on this side, that's standard 100 feet, and then I'm not sure what happened there by Henley, but it's sold off on either side.
And in some cases, like Eldon, the city owns it, and they're interested, and they're actually working to put a trailhead in, because we don't own much of it there, so.
So the red was what? The railroad did own, but was not transferred over for whatever reason.
Exactly. It was sold before it came to us, before Ameren gave it to us.
Okay. Thank you.
But, you know, we're not wanting to acquire any additional, if possible, and so it's not something we really do on the Katy, and we don't anticipate doing it here.
I sat through a few hearings several years ago, when the Rock Island was passing through the legislature, you might say, and my recollection is the title searches on the, on the Rock Island were exponentially tougher than they were on the Katy Trail because of all the deals that were made, or supposedly made, or not made, or so on and so forth, but.
I think our real estate guys agree with you.
You are correct.
If you told me these maps, I would say yes.
Yes, okay. But you do have enough width to, for a bicycle to ride?
Oh, yeah, we have enough to develop the trail. The questions were about trailheads and where we have property and stuff like that, so.
Well, some places ought to be fighting over having the trailhead, shouldn't they?
They are. That was a big discussion last night, because we had, what, Rosebud, Beaufort, Leslie, and Gerald all there last night, and they're all interested in being.
Pretty close together, less than 10 miles. Traditionally, about 10 miles is the right distance to have a trailhead. That, you know, that's a good distance for a cyclist, they can make it that far, refill their water bottle, take a break, go to the bathroom, whatever. Typical cyclist cycles about 12 miles an hour, or I should say, I cycle about 12 miles an hour, and I am on the lower end of an average cyclist, so, you know, trailhead to trailhead in about an hour, so that'd be, you know, 10, 12 miles, so if your, if your communities are only three to four miles apart, then.
Our closest trailhead on the Katy is about four miles, I think that's Doots out of Martha's Hill. Our longest is Hartsburg to McBane, about 16 miles, but they average about, I think, Hartsburg to Jeff City is about almost 11.
Where's the steepest grade?
I think coming out of the Gaskinade River Bridge going east is one of the steeper grades. I used to, heard stories as we've been out, where they basically would take half the train, take it up, and then go back and get the other half, through Summerfield, I think is, yeah, in that area, so. We've got one on the Katy that's interesting, Booneville's called Lard Hill, because I guess the railroad hit a lady.
Local legends.
Local legends hit a lady's cow, and they wouldn't, the railroad wouldn't pay for it, so she went up and larded on the track. Until they paid her for her cow, so it's kind of a famous, infamous story on the Katy. There are some grades, but most of it's pretty level and pretty flat, easy to do. And the good news with the Rock Island, we've had the Katy for 30 years and operated it, we're trying to be good landowners, working with communities, we've seen a lot of community development associated with the trail, and it's been a nice addition to our state park system, and we expect the Rock Island to be the same.
So far as scheduling, I think, community meetings, I would think probably Eugene will be more, who can do Eugene's schedule?
Okay.
For you, Wayne, that's what, you set that up? We just.
We can set it up, as long as we had contact and who to kind of start with, we'll be happy to set it up.
So I can get you some contact if, oh.
Okay, that'd be great.
Help us out in a good way. What do you do on our?
Who are you going to contact? The mayor of Bromley or?
Contact the superintendent.
Superintendent of the school, yeah.
Maybe they have a way to help spread the message.
And they have a new, they have a new, he's a pretty dynamic young man, so.
I'd like to have a city councilman out there that you're going to be working with. Thank you.
I would attend the meeting.
Yeah, just any contact, and we can start there. We're trying to get those done between now and June, so Ryan could be playing together. Thank you all for having us.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Thanks.
No, they have a new.
Not Bromley, Henley, I meant.
Yep, and then I'll reach out to them and see what Bates might know. I know that in the spring, schools are busy, busy with stuff, so we'll see what's available, and then.
When are you ready to road trip down there?
Yeah.
Jeff, you want to ride along?
When it gets a little, gets a little bit warmer, yeah, yeah.
Would they want? Do you want to keep one? This has, this has got all of the communities on the Rock Island Corridor, so if there So if there are questions about what the right of way looks like.
No, I'd like to do that.
You might get left in Henley, Sam.
Melody's there. I'll just go over to Melody's. Okay, do we, do we have any other issues that come before us today?
No.
Jeff, no?
No.
No. Until 3:00 P.M.
Second.
All in favor? Hi. Okay, it is Tuesday, April 12th. We'll go back into open session. We have our ARP advisory committee here and we presented you all with the book. I assume you've all studied that.
This is an eight-member board. Six of our individuals today, we only have three. So, but what you have here is the needs assessment forms that were on our website for over a month.
Yeah.
For people to apply. What you have on the inside is a list of the people that apply. And on the spreadsheet is a condensed version of the information that was received on the project entity. I have had requests from other people, other entities to still put in. I think there's a confusion between it being a needs form versus an application for.
Yes.
So again, however you guys want to run it from there. But we do have other, even our internal departments. Toby, I want to put you on the spot. She's here. She didn't have the chance to apply online. She still wants to. It's really not, it's a need space.
Yeah, yeah.
I told her she could come today and she wanted to talk, you know, about hers. But however you guys see that you want to run it. Roger, I'll let you take it on the table.
I don't know if we really are prepared to even discuss it because we've got Adam here from Centertown. But considering the fact you haven't seen any of this yet or been, been able to go over it, I would almost say we might do better just to have a very short meeting today and have you, pardon?
Study what we got.
Study what we've got. And again, these are not applications as such, so, yeah, you're.
And I should say there's 27 of them and the total request comes to over 36,500,000.
That's close. But.
That's a lot. And we think this is all the requests?
No, no, and because like Juvenile Attention Center.
Well, you were saying that Salvation Army intended to apply and it's not in here?
Let's see, we heard just by early letter, I think.
Is that how we got it? Did you get something?
I, I met with David Perdue, oh gosh.
How about Don?
Or Don Perdue. Krista and I met with them late last year already on a request for funds. And again, I suggested that, that, you know, they could apply to us and also to the city, so.
I mean, my first glance at looking at the list, it looks like there's going to need to be coordination between you guys and the city because there's a lot of city requests on here as well and they have money also, so.
Yeah, and then they also have the viaduct, which is, is going to be coming out of a different pot altogether. So I'm not really sure why that's in here at all, but.
But that pot doesn't have enough money to build the viaduct. The capital improvements program.
Oh, really?
Because this wasn't an application. This is just an assessment form. So everybody could have been sending it in for, you know, maybe they need a new cage for their parrot. I don't know. So this, and we still, this doesn't mean you can't apply for it after we have this. This is just supposed to tell us how many pots of money we're going to have and how much to try to put toward them.
Well, some of our internal requests, I think we probably need to act on fairly soon. Like EMS and, and the sheriffs, 2.5 million. We, we had a 911 meeting Friday and so I don't know. On our internal requests, if we can act sooner.
Is Cole County Fire Protection District, are you counting that as internal? They're really not.
No, that wouldn't be internal.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
They're on here too.
But that, no, that, that's not internal.
No.
They're a separate political subdivision.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that it was a request by the, by us is the internal request for those funds, so.
Yes.
I think that's where that we were.
Was it?
Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
There's a separate request for another item on here as well, which does not, is not included in our request, so. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
These by names are the organizations that applied. Doesn't mean what the project is, as you say.
Yeah. So we will, if we've got 30 million now, we will have considerably more before we're done.
Teresa? Are you still hanging up, Teresa?
Will there be a drop dead date as to when you have to have a request in? If, if last Friday was it, will there be one?
Depends on how we want to give it out. If we want to go through it and bust through it all right now.
Well, we're getting half the money this year and half the money next year, so.
No, we got half the money last year.
Or last year, I mean, and we'll get the other half. Yeah, so, yeah, I guess we would do it all this year.
I mean, we could do it a thousand different ways, so that's, I guess, what we got to hammer out. Do you want to have a big grant round, a small grant round? And then if there's money left, then we can do another big grant round and another small grant round or, and that's just throwing something out there. I'm not saying that's how we need to do it. Because we already saw with the forms filled out that we can bust through all of it tomorrow, so.
It's a little like the family getting their bills in at the end of the month and saying, I'll pay that one, but I'm not paying that one, at least not now, and that one I'll never pay. It's almost, you know, that's an idea too. I'm just, just, I'm just thinking out loud. But if, if you, if you were the czar of the operation, would you just take some of these and put them over here and say, "Sorry, Charlie, we're not going there"? Because, you know, we have a, when we get, when we get the rest of the internals in, it's going to be in excess of 40 million, I think. Well, that might be stretching it a little bit. And actually, the one about to, to pick on one, the one of the viaduct, wasn't submitted by the city. It was submitted by the chamber. So, and that, that is being circulated. Roger, you know that the city's capital improvements tax, the county's capital improvement tax, the five-year, it's thought about, but.
It's one of the projects being discussed.
Right, yes. So it's hard to rank them. I know that. But it's, at some point, there has to be some set asides that, that are not going to be accommodated, at least in the size asked for.
Teresa, can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you.
Do you have any words of wisdom of how to go from here from our needs assessment to, what's the next step?
Yeah, so when we kind of set up the needs assessment and kind of changed the wording to a needs assessment from application, it was more to gather, you know, if there was something specific in the community out there that seemed like it was maybe rising to the top. Maybe there was an infrastructure thing or something like that that was kind of looking like, hey, this could be a good, you know, reason to get with the city and do this project or something like that. So if you're not seeing anything like that, then, yeah, I, I don't know what the next step would be there. But if there's something on there that seems like, hey, this might be a good project or this might be a good area to ask for more applications in, so. That was kind of the idea behind it was just more, hey, this looks like what the community would want us to spend it on. Now getting, you know, the 20, how many ever applications we got, it's not a ton of applications. So not, not as complete of a needs assessment as you probably would want, but gives you a little idea of what's out there and maybe what you can kind of lean towards as far as spending the money on. If you wanted to go outside the county.
As far as a category, a category for types of expenditures, anything from public safety, tourism, to anything you can imagine is on, out of these 27. And what kind of money, how much money could each type of pot and the way to go from there?
Get a notebook and a spreadsheet. Well, it looks like we could take the list and at least work our way through this list and try to put them in some type of priority order as to what we would think they are.
Well, that's kind of what I was.
Everybody's going to be different, right, Jeff?
That's kind of what I was thinking and maybe meet again in a couple of weeks, say the, meet again on the 26th. But, but we do probably need kind of a drop dead date, I guess, for people to submit requests.
That's a whole other application process.
Yeah, I know, I know.
But we got to know what we're doing before we get into that application process. As far as how much money is available, what qualifies them for that type of, you know, like Jeff said, do separate pots, separate times, you know, nonprofit, you know, maybe capital requests. Do them all at one time, the application is not, I mean, Teresa, you tell me. The application does vary a little, I would think.
Yeah, I, I think you need to get your game plan together as far as what you're wanting to spend the money on. This, this risk assessment or needs assessment is more to kind of, like I said, give you those ideas of what you want to spend the money on, what's out there, and then maybe to formulate a more specific request from the community of what's out there. If you're getting a lot of small businesses that are requesting money, maybe that's the way you should go. Looks like there's a lot of kind of bigger projects here, that maybe that's the way you want to go. I mean, there's nothing stopping you from, hey, this project number 13, that's exactly what we were thinking. Let's talk to them and see if that's something that we could go with. So it's kind of open to your interpretation at the end of the day. But I, I would hesitate to just, you know, open another round of applications without being more specific on what you're actually wanting to fund at this point.
I don't even know if we're all playing the same sport at this point to have a game plan. So I don't know if we rank these and gives us an idea by how they're ranked that we can say, okay, it sounds like majority wants this much in economic development. This many people want it in infrastructure. This many people want nonprofit. I don't even know how you want to break it down.
Yeah, I, I know you got municipalities, you've got water districts, you've got other not-for-profits, special learning center, Council for Drug-Free Youth, so.
This is not everybody's going to apply.
No, it's not. That's.
How big the pots actually need to be. I guess you got an idea of where a lot of it can go, but we can burn through that real fast. We could take the part that's not internal and put that into different pots of money and.
Yeah, because.
Work on that. The internal stuff's kind of, I mean, that's, if we want to make a decision on that stuff, we can probably do that.
Well, I would like to do some of our internal stuff.
Well, that's internal, so that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'd like to do that sooner, sooner than later because it's going to take roughly a year, even after you order that to. Yes.
I, I think I remember you saying last meeting that it was possible to fund that using a different pot of money or a different source of money initially. Is that what, what you said or did I hear that wrong?
I don't think I did, although I was talking to David Bach yesterday. And he said there is some 911 money out there that is for equipment. So he is going to check on that. And if, if we could find something like that, there's a lot of, there's a lot of money out there. If we can use some of that, that saves us money that we can, we can use on the other entities, so. And I know we've talked to Luke Holt Schneider too about trying to find funds out there for 911. And, you know, I don't know if there's any funds for the juvenile attention center that, that we could access, Toby, or not.
Well, the back half of the project could probably have to be a little.
Yeah. No, we can't, yeah.
Teresa, again, I hate to put you on the spot, other customers that you've dealt with or businesses, how have they found about the application process?
So we've, I've, I've had more that I've kind of gone towards the, just give me a second. Sorry, got a little cough on me here, but I've gone more towards kind of flowing it to the not-for-profits for them to do assistance. So I've seen a lot of that kind of application process, workforce grants, small business assisting grants. I've seen a lot of those application processes. But I've also seen the other side of it where you just completely spend it all internally and for the needs of your community as much as possible as that goes. But it, it really just, I mean, depends on what, what you guys want to spend it on. Obviously, the application process is a little more in-depth, time-consuming for your staff. And you have to take that into consideration, of course. But if that's what your citizens are, are calling for and wanting, maybe that's a way to go. But it, it's all over the map, really. I mean, some people use it all on big projects. So it's, and I've said this before, it, they made it very broad on what you can use it for. And it's almost a hindrance because there's just so many ways to spend it that you have to, you just have so many choices that you really have to decide and just go a route.
Harry, I know you.
So. No, I was just going to say with, with the committee, I think that's, that's what you've, you've got to do is you've got to make a decision on a route to go. And then if that's an application process, then we'll start that. You know, that's internal, if that's maybe partnering with a city or something on an infrastructure thing. But I think you need to start thinking about making that decision sooner rather than later.
Harry, if the main goal was at one time to have something, this is a one-time money, to have something that will be here 20 years from now, you know, is that something still your code?
Some of it has to have a life that is longer than ours because we're not going to pay for it. Somebody else is going to pay for it.
So that should be all in the consideration for what you want to do.
Right.
And then in fact, if we can partially, some of these are saying we could partially fund it, so.
As I'm looking through the list, I'm wondering if it would be prudent to prioritize it by the public entities and also by the private entities. The nonprofits and those kind of folks, put them in one category and then put the public entities in a separate category. Because I'm hearing you guys are, might be interested in doing something with some of those fairly quick, potentially. I'm just throwing that out there as an idea.
Is, is there only one far-profit business involved in this so far?
So by the category they picked, two, three.
Arc and Descent is the only one I'm seeing.
That's what I.
You would know these more than I. I don't really know what some of these companies are.
Well, the second column says non-profit.
Yeah. Do you see the rest of them?
I think that's a good idea to kind of tackle it. And I guess I'd break it down, then the governmental, I'd break down county and then other governmental.
That's good, good idea, Jim. I think we could call it in-house or whatever. The county, that would include any of the elected officials, EMS, the sheriff, and so on and so forth. So that's Cole County. Other political subdivisions. So that's Cole County, other political subdivisions, not-for-profits, and far-profit, although they may not claim to be far-profit, uh, one of the entities, at least they're competing with far-profits, aren't they? The apartments project are...
And the chamber of commerce is on here twice, and I know both of those requests are related to a public entity project.
Yes.
Well, I, I, I think I...
They're requesting money from somebody else, is what they're doing.
Well, I, I think it probably goes in the public entity bucket.
Yeah, I would think so.
Even though it's asked for by a not-for-profit.
Yeah, that's who the money's going to go to.
Yeah. Okay.
And it, it's potentially a joint project between the city and the county, and neither political subdivision is ready to commit, so the chamber is applying for the money. That's, that's what is happening.
This may be a stupid question, but is the committee going to meet and go through the, we go through it...
Individually?
Individually, and then I think it'd be helpful if the committee met, and then present what the committee came up with, to the commission.
Make a good idea.
Yeah, I kind of like that.
You, you guys can throw names against the wall and see if they stick or not, but if you got two commissioners there, um...
Yeah.
The press is there as well, so...
Yeah, the host is probably me.
Just two?
Just two of us makes it a quorum, yes. One does not.
It's going to be a public meeting.
Yeah.
You can have nine, and then come back.
Yeah, you could have, you could have nine.
I mean, that way we could have this guy.
Yes, yeah.
No, I know, you got to be three open.
Well, I don't think that's a bad idea, that's what the committee was formed for anyway, was to...
Yeah, we're willing, they're advisors, and stuff on that side, so ultimately, their benefit is, people don't like what's done, they can say, "Well, you know, we got to get places to do it." I get it, huh?
Yeah.
I mean, there's no, it must be out, somebody's not going to be happy.
Well, absolutely.
I didn't know the number, but, you know, there's no way we can...
36 is...
And that's just the ones that filled out the needs assessment form.
Yeah.
You don't know what you're going to get when you get the application. That might have been why people didn't fill it out, we don't have to, so...
I don't know, I don't know whether this is a good suggestion or a good insight, but...
I don't think there's a bad one right now.
I've never let that stop me before. I think some of the requests seem like projects that lend themselves to the county, say a five-year sales tax or whatever it is, city, and we're not going to be able to fund them all. I don't know whether that should be a consideration, that could be included in the, the next sales tax project readily than some of the others. Of course, that's, that's putting it off for a while. But if we don't, if we don't fund it, it'll be put off for a good while.
Yeah, it's five years.
Yeah.
I kind of like that idea, and then we'll get your, we'll get your feedback and opinions.
That's really how all our other advisory groups work anyway.
Yeah, I, I kind of like that idea.
They may have one commissioner sit on it, but...
Yeah.
Way to go, Eric.
As long as you don't let the sheriff at that meeting, because it's a distraction.
Who was Eric? He knocked the radio down.
But no, I think that's, I think that's, and you might, you know, have it at a different time so you get some of our members who...
We can, we can walk out right now since you're here, and y'all can talk about it.
But we're still missing...
Y'all can use this one.
We're still missing...
We don't choose the time, we don't get more of the committee here. And we got Thor here today, which is not a very good turnout.
No. So you could have it maybe at a different time even.
What, two others? Four, Condi, Chris...
And Herb Coon couldn't make it.
You're just looking at the wrong indicator.
And they need to, they need to look at those books as well before you meet.
But we want to keep it going.
So how many, you think, a week for you all to meet, or 10 days, or...
Well, this is Easter week, I don't think...
Oh, no.
We're not going to meet anymore this week.
No.
If you can't get everybody at the meeting, we can have a Zoom call set up here, and you can use this chamber.
I got Zoom too.
So, yeah, so, I mean, that way it makes it a little more convenient. I mean, I like in-person meetings better, but sometimes it just doesn't work as good, and...
I know Chris Jornell has a hard time making these too. I'm, we're going to leave it in Roger's hand, he's the chairman.
But we can help put the meeting together, so we need to send out the...
Well, I'd have none, do you?
Yeah, if we need to shoot out the emails.
Mondays, let's start with Monday, the sooner we get started, the better, I'm thinking. Gary?
If it's later in the day, I don't care, it's evening.
Monday's a holiday, right?
You know, or maybe you start later, late afternoon.
Monday's a holiday.
Monday? Isn't Monday a holiday? Why not?
It's Easter Monday.
My birthday's Sunday, so Monday should be the holiday.
Their birthday's on Easter?
Yes. Yes, first time ever.
Really? Boy, I'll tell you what.
Four or five, what do you guys think?
After four is better for me on Monday.
Shoot for, for, after four?
Or after.
4:30, it's 4:30 Monday.
Is this room available, or do you need a room at my facility where the air conditioning works?
I think you might corrupt them.
Butter up both sides of that brick.
And then if they're after our...
What'd you say, Toby, the pringer center's available too?
I think so.
Tor, is that, Center Town's available?
Hard to get on Zoom, I would have to get Billy to put them on Zoom. It doesn't matter me, though.
It doesn't matter me either, but...
I'm right in the center, so...
We, if we meet at your place, we don't have to worry about, this is going to, not that you're, no offense, Jeff, but this place is going to close down. I'm anticipating that we, we need to discuss this for a while, so...
And Debbie, can you email these who didn't make it and make sure they pick, pick up their...
You're going to have dinner then, right?
Yeah.
Sure. 10:25 Southwest. So we'll meet at Gary, Gary's office, 4:30. Where'd you say you sent out the...
10:25 Southwest Boulevard, just up from Moccasins there, and off on the left-hand side. Byer Technologies, finds Ascend Business Strategy.
Yeah. I'm sorry. 10:25 Southwest Boulevard. Sweet A.
Drink, some appetizers?
Ascend Technologies.
When they're done. A standing meeting too.
Oh, it's not technologies, I got it wrong.
Makes meetings go faster.
And I guess he has his fancy desk?
If anyone does, can, but they're willing to do via Zoom, I can set up a Zoom, I would just be very available. Because at least then I can steer other than discussion, and I can be a part of it.
Do you guys want it sorted any particular way?
Just so we know.
County separate?
Yeah, you, and that's, I like the governmental and do the county in-house, and then the other political subdivisions. And then do not-for-profits, but yeah, you're...
I'm open to suggestions right now. I want to see what y'all come up with, and... There are so many different ways, so appreciate the input on that.
Yeah, I'm not going to manipulate that on my phone. No, no.
Alan, you know one of that.
Okay.
I know about where you are, I can find it.
Do we need anything else? Do we need B K D on there? I look at what it costs, you know, per minute, I'm like...
Yep.
We will let you know what the next meeting is, or what's direction we're heading.
Yep, just let me know, and I'll help out anywhere I can.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Teresa.
Okay.
Thanks.
We're going to meet, and we're going to prioritize, when do we want to get back together?
So when are you meeting?
Monday, next Monday, yeah.
Next, so the 18th? We could meet the 26th, which would be two weeks from today.
Well, we meet Tuesday after they meet, and they can just have whoever come as a representative and provide whatever input and keep it moving. I mean, why wait two weeks? Because if we get it prioritized how we want to do it, we can start getting an application out and moving.
Why don't we shoot for that?
The 19th?
Yeah, a week from today.
And if it's not ready, then we take it off the calendar and go to the next week.
Right. We should...
We have enough time, if we don't know, because we wouldn't know till after the 18th.
We'll be here on Tuesday, we'll just...
Say no report.
Move to the next week.
Or if y'all prefer to do it a different way, I'm open to it.
Yeah, if you're meeting the 18th at 4:30, is that going to give you enough time to kind of compile it for the next day?
We got to get it done.
Okay.
Yes.
Are these engineers, they're, they're, okay, so we will do...
We're only going to work on this list, we're not working on anything else they got.
Okay, so, the 19th at 3:00 P.M.
3:00.
Yeah.
If we don't need it, then we just...
If we don't, yeah, if it, and if it's not doable, then... Yeah.
If we need to do it Friday or something, we can change the days, we just give us heads up. Let us know when we need a beer.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
On your way to bed tonight.
Okay. Nothing else? I make a motion, we stand in recess until 4:30. All in favor?
Gary, who is winning the employee of the year? On that commercial?
Oh, yeah.
I, I, now that you're a TV student.
That's right, yeah.
I don't know if it's good or bad, you got me down in top of my head, you know?
Yeah.
Hey, Gary, I need to ask you a question.
Real quick.